Okay, we're live.
And we've got Cora now, Cora?
Yes, you've got it.
Right. Apologies have been received from councillor Auburn and councillor Young.
Councillor Laura, who's at the project meeting.
Oh, is she? Right.
She should have gone to do the formal opening.
As the mayor's, okay.
That's it, you don't want to be scratching my own.
None of the people that sit down there. Okay. Any declarations of interest, particularly for the planning applications? No?
Yeah, number 10.
Number 10, I think it's, yes. Right, that's to do with windows, isn't it? Yeah. Okay, the previous minutes, has anyone got anything to say about them? Or can we approve them? I propose we approve, Corinne, the second them, all those in favour? That's four of us, that should be enough.
Okay.
Five, right. Now, councillor Green, to do with your 20 is plenty in Nethercourt, you've got something about antisocial parking, haven't you? And you've given us some information.
Yeah. What you've got there is, because I was getting a number of complaints about parking on the Nethercourt Estate, the roads there are particularly narrow, so I guess it's why people are bothered. And some of the sightlines around the corners are difficult, people park there. Because I was getting a number of complaints, I decided to put a query on the two Nethercourt Estate Facebooks groups, one of which has 762 members, the other has 73 members. And I got quite a large response from a variety of Nethercourt residents. They included in the paper, all pointing out different corners and bends that they are concerned about. And I, under the heading of conclusions draw, I've written a paragraph about the particular corners and roads and that I think needs some action. Needs some action because there are a number of minor accidents occurring. No fatalities or major injuries, as far as I know, but minor accidents that could develop into something worse. And also, the parking restricts access to, not only to council lorries, but also potentially to ambulances and floor engines and whatever. And the reason I asked Pat if I could bring it forward is because I, despite my 20 years or so as a councillor, I don't really know how to take this forward. And I, when I was a TDC councillor, I would have persuaded the Chair of the JTB to let me speak to the JTB. But I understand that JTB has changed. That sort of thing just isn't done now. And I read recently that KCC officers are not even turning up to JCB meetings, so I'm a bit of a lass, how best to take this forward? I was hoping that Pat or Laura, through their experience, and then, and TDC councillors, as I say now, how, where we could go with this?
Oh, because I've got something to say, but yeah. There is, we've got similar problems, I think we've got similar problems with parking on corner. We've got problems all over with parking. So during, once lockdown slightly opened, we began meeting a few of us. And actually, every week, somebody different came and we, and a number of issues became apparent. And parking on corners was one of them. We've got, we've got waste vehicles that can't get up streets on a regular basis because of the parking. Three weeks, one road didn't have any of its waste done. And so I waited for the, the waste man to arrive and said, why haven't the bins been collected for three weeks? And he walked me back up the road and said, look at this corner, normally it's got cars on it. We need the whole section yellow lined across boxes so that nobody can park in there. There were issues to do with residents not being able to park, builders parking all over the place, care workers was another one, they were getting fined to do their 20 minutes helping some elderly lady. So what happened is, we, we ended up in a dialogue with our East Cliff colleagues because they were having similar problems on their cliff. And we, on the east, on our cliff, we were going to go down the route of a petition to try and get into Cabinet quicker. We eventually decided that a motion would be presented and Helen did that. So a motion was presented and two Cabinet meetings ago, maybe we need to follow this.
This is to TDC?
Yeah, this is to TDC. It all fits in, we, we were told that there would be a complete review because the motion was supported by everybody, I think, wasn't it, everybody? So it was, it was meant, there's meant, there's meant to start, under, under councillor David Stevens' lead, a whole review of parking in, across Thanet, actually, of which we could feed information in. So that information could be fed in. My understanding of yellow lines, which is, my understanding of yellow lines is, the only way to have yellow lines put in is you have to go through KCC, but I'm not sure of the process because nobody seems to know the process.
I know.
Remarking yellow lines, so trying to get some yellow lines remarked after they're there is actually a, a TDC responsibility, so it is very, very confusing.
Right, well, we've got similar problem in Ozzas and Montefiore.
It's all over the place.
Well, yeah, but it's a big wide road. And somebody, a cyclist was knocked off and killed in January, I think. So we've got a petition, it's a bit of pathetic petition. You've got quite a few signatures. I wore my feet out with it. And I did one online and I think I got four signatures, which will probably you and me and two other people. But anyway, the person to contact is Richard Heaps, or via Paul Valick. So he came down and he refused to meet any of the residents, quite rightly, because they all have different opinions of what should happen where. And has, we now have maps that he's drawn up, where new yellow lines are going to be done this summer. We have a sort of 95% promise, but we will wait and see. So that's how to get yellow lines. Have you got yellow lines in Nethercourt?
No.
No, so you need to get, I mean, it's...
But in terms of extent have you got the, sorry.
Sorry, Corinne.
Sorry, Corinne, I didn't see you at all, go on, go ahead.
Just so, as councillor Wing said, there's a review of parking at TDC and councillor Crittenden made motion to full council. That was agreed by everybody. So there's an independent consultation of consultants going around. So he, she is going, appointed by the council, and he, she will do a review of all the parking in Thanet. So Thanet wide, it wouldn't just be in Ramsgate, which we were complaining about, it would be Thanet wide. So I think that's coming now, I think they...
Good. Good.
Committee's going to be set up, isn't it?
Yeah, so there'll be an input from councillors, you know, residents, community groups, everybody, into it. So this, you know, we could presumably input into it, RTC. So just to say, sorry, I mean, surely this sort of goes with item five, the HIP report? Can't that all go together and that?
Yes.
So have you got details of that person that we need?
No, not yet. Councillor David Saunders is the one, as Becky said, is cabinet member and he's, he says it's coming, but they haven't appointed anyone yet, but they will agree.
We all went to that, there was about four of us at that Cabinet meeting who spoke when the item came up, wasn't it?
Councillor Austin, that's fantastic.
I was just going to ask whether the success that you've had in Montefiore and getting the yellow lines is related to the sad death of the cyclist or whether, you know...
Well, they say...
Get his tail, don't you?
They say no. We haven't had a lot, enough deaths to get any more traffic calming measures.
It's only been two.
Two. Yeah, and within the last three years, it'd be more than...
But that was 10, don't you?
Yeah, but we did get Peter Burrows, who, you, you were there when he talked. Nobody else was, were they? The road retired, were you there?
No, I couldn't go to the meeting.
But engineer, he came to a meeting of the residents and he advised us what to do, which I won't really go into now.
Very good policeman though, don't they?
Yeah, but he hasn't really actually done anything yet.
Well, that's... He does appear, doesn't he?
Do what he can do.
So it's Richard Heaps, is it?
Richard Heaps, who works for Paul Valick and he lives locally.
Yeah, I know Richard.
And apparently the place to look at is Cliffs End, where apparently they have such, this is what Peter Burrows said, an aggressive community group, that they managed to get those mini roundabouts, they managed to get that chicane, they managed to get all sorts of traffic calming measures down there. And apparently, they've got all the equipment to measure the speed of traffic and things. But when I inquired through councillor Young, they denied it. They said, I have to go to KCC, which is going around in circles, isn't it? Sorry, yeah, Corinne.
We need, as a sort of comprehensive plan, we feed into, we can't just do bits, in my opinion. It should be the whole of Ramsgate, we should feed into this review by TDC. And this items four and five, we can, we can feed into that. But the problem is, there's three levels, you've got town council, district, KCC. You've got the Joint Transport Board, which is held at TDC, it's run by KCC. I think the Chair is a KCC councillor.
It's the Broadstairs.
Alternates the Chair.
So, sorry?
Alternates the Chair.
Okay, so the problem is, you've got conflicting...
Yes.
Issues conflicting...
We didn't propose about that one, that one, but now we're beginning to...
So, you know, if you want every yellow line, say, on a corner somewhere, you have to put in your application, as it were, to TDC. They take it away to the Joint Transport Board, which only meets once every three months. Then they go to KCC with it, KCC go back to TDC, Joint Transport Board, and then probably, I think, go back to the residents' consultation and then go back to TDC, so it takes forever.
It's ridiculous. He, he has promised us this summer.
Yeah, well, there's two, there's two different issues on that, the yellow lines, we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
And the traffic calming.
No, no, we're just talking about yellow lines. We failed totally on traffic calming, but we're not giving up. But, yeah, sorry, Richard.
It does strike me that TDC has an axe to grind in this because it's TDC's waste vehicles, et cetera, that are constantly struggling because of that parking. So if we can get the ear of a Cabinet member who is willing to push it, it strikes me, I mean, it's a more general issue, isn't it? And it disadvantages TDC's delivery of service. So therefore, you would have thought that a Cabinet member in TDC would be willing to push it quite hard with KCC.
What parking Cabinet member is, oh, I can't think of his, who is he? I'll come back to one.
It's David, isn't it?
It's David, yeah, David Saunders.
David Saunders.
He's pushing the review, the passing review of TDC.
Okay.
Helen has been, councillor Crittenden has been, you know, pushing on our behalf at TDC, so now we can step forward here. But it's complicating all these.
I know, I mean, the thing, and all things were great. It's not narrow roads and it's not, it's a big wide road that apparently the tram used to come down in, in the day. And then, so people put their foot down and travel very fast. Not that that was the cause of the accident, that was sightlands.
If you start parking there, then the speeds will increase.
Yes.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, but the sightlands are pretty awful, aren't they? Yeah.
Yeah, they're parked too near the road, the junction. So we, we need the yellow lines extending so at least you can have a chance that when you come up to a road junction, you can look at it and you can see more than the car's length away.
Apparently, it was supposed to have 10 metres on the corner.
Yeah, but it's not enough.
Well, that's all they're prepared to do.
Yeah, but that's...
If they are already. No, no, not all of them, not, but some of them haven't got any.
Well, yeah, but the ones that have got them, they do it to a standard, don't they? That standard's not good enough.
But if we get some more, that's small.
In terms of, in terms of a SED device, the speed indicator device, when we agree, when the council agreed the 20 mile an hour zone in Nethercourt, it was said then that in terms of enforcing it, the PCSO said they would help us enforce it if we had a speed indicator device. And the council indicated, this council indicated for use generally.
Yes. Well, apparently they've got one at Cliffs End, but yeah. But also, to get a speed thing across the road, apparently only costs £120.
Yeah, they're right, country.
Yeah, so we'd like to get that as well. There is an action group now, but it's sort of slightly taken out of our hands, but anyway.
Could, could we agree to minute, we, we thought, or to investigate?
The SED device and to contact David Saunders? Well, this is part of our highways improvement plan, isn't it?
Yeah, Chair, I think the two forms, items four and five should be together.
Yeah.
The HIP report.
They should. They should, the fact that the place is missing yellow lines on corners should immediately be rectified.
Yep.
And the third thing that is of an issue is enforcement.
Yes.
Because it doesn't, it never gets enforced. And the people, there's a school up, Downton Park Drive, and apparently the parents park all over the zig signs and the...
One parked in front of my drive the other day and me and Angela were, I was taking her to work and we were stood there looking up and down the road, nine o'clock, you see. And a woman come up, she said, oh, oh, I'm sorry, am I in your way? And she could, and Angela said, well, yes. She said, oh, I'm sorry, but I did notice you didn't have a drop curb. She said, oh, but you didn't notice the car on the drive then?
Now, apparently there is something about drop curbs that police won't enforce.
I can't afford £1,000 for a drop curb.
But if, if they've rented that, somebody blocks you, the police will come out. But is, there isn't a dropped curb.
Yeah, but they won't.
They won't. So...
Careful, we're going to block somebody in, but not to block them out, I think.
Right, okay. So we're going to find out about the SED device.
Chair, you have a proposal, you need a seconder. The town clerk to investigate purchase of a speed device and also to consult, contact councillor David Saunders reparking issues, is that what you wanted me to put?
Yes.
So you need a seconder for that.
Our seconder, yeah. All those in favour? Yes, everybody is in favour.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's good. So when we get to the HIP report, it becomes more interesting. Because this was to do with Peter Burrows coming in and his recommendation that we go for a 20, that we don't, we don't, shall we, about? We go for a 20 mile an hour zone within the railway line, right?
Just for you, please.
Oh, it's here, isn't it?
Yeah, probably be used in the street.
Which is there from there.
There's his recommendations there.
Yeah.
Okay, item five.
Yes, so, item five, yes. We'll come back to the signage thing. A 20 mile an hour zone across the entire town centre, all roads from the train line towards the coast, excluding the A299, which I presume is the London Road, is it? Between there and the sea. Now, his reason for choosing that area was there are very few or less, what he calls gateways, because that's where the cost is. When, if, if you're driving along London Road and you want to turn down, you have to sign, because London Road is...
It's not London Road though, it's up to the, it's up to the roundabout to break down into the tunnel.
Yes.
London Road isn't part of it, so...
No, no, I know that, I know, I'm just thinking about these gateways. You have, as soon as you turn off a road that is not 20 miles an hour, you've got to have signs, which is where the expense comes in. Yeah, yes, it's, it's complicated around London Road.
Every time you enter the zone.
Every time you enter the zone. And if you do it within the railway line, apparently there will be fewer, what he calls gateways. So it should be cheaper. Now, he has since insisted to me that KCC should pay for this. We'd like to... But they, they paid for the Cliffs End stuff. Yes, councillor Constantine, councillor Shonk, KCC councillors have funding they could help us with. Yes, didn't they? We have asked them for help in Downton Park Drive, which also goes into Broadstairs, so we've contacted some of the Broadstairs councillors, yes.
Did we actually have a HIP?
Yes, we started one certainly.
Did we?
We all...
Have copied it?
Yes, well, probably. Can we have a copy?
I can ask the town clerk to forward that to...
Or maybe, yes. Because I think as time goes on, we, we think of more things that we want to add to it.
I think we need to do it.
Yes, well, it's only very recently we did it. But everybody was asked to contribute.
Yeah, I don't think we saw a follow-up.
But, but if we're, if we're going for this 20 mile an hour zone, which I think we ought to do, but...
I thought we agreed a budget, Chair, last year, to do all this work.
Budget last year?
We agreed a budget last year.
Yeah, for the HIP, for this plan, yeah, yeah. For finance.
10K or 20K?
20K, we had an argument about that. It was near...
Won't save for this one.
Yeah. Pay for some of it.
It'll help, yeah.
It'll help pay for the KCC engineers' time to draw pictures, maps. But, so, could I propose that we, we go for that? I don't quite know how to phrase it. Well, first of all, that we see the HIP and update it, so that's one proposal. And then, and we include updating it with this 20 mile an hour zone.
They'll actually cut that.
Yes, but apparently, we are so neglected down here by KCC. And the other thing on here is, he is supposed to be doing a report on all this bad signs. And they're appalling when he goes through it, they're absolutely appalling. And he thinks that if we embarrass them, push them in this, they may be more keen to support us in other things. But I think he's...
So on that note, somebody reported people coming down Albion Hill the wrong way, loads of people. Apparently, the sign at the top is completely covered by trees.
It's not completely covered. No, because that was one of the things when I was doing drains, that was what you checked, is that people...
Well, this is somebody who stopped me in the high street, I said, it's not my ward, but I'll try and...
There are two, one on each side, one is...
I've not looked, but...
No, I did go, yeah.
I bumped into Maxine and she's asked for somebody to go and have a look, so...
Well, that will...
But there are cars going down, they're going up...
KCC East Cliff councillors.
Don't think there's a warning sign saying that traffic's coming out at the button there.
Well, I do know our road markings are terrible, so they have come and, because people are coming the wrong way down Addington Street on a regular basis, like two or three people a day, in cars. So they have redone the, the lines at that end, but some of it's just not clear. I'm with you, the signage is shocking, yes.
But if we review the HIP, we can cover all this.
I also think it's a good idea for us to adopt this because I know Trevor Shonk, councillor Shonk, is really worried about St Augustine's and the crossing point there, it's bonkers, it's bonkers.
I think we've said that, and, and the, the road up to Victoria Road, the bends, isn't it? But we do have that scheme coming, which I don't think it's going to make any difference. Any idea of a schedule, Chair? Any idea of a schedule? For the HIP?
The whole thing, yeah.
The whole thing, well, we're going to get the, hopefully get what we've done already. But poor Laura's inundated with stuff, isn't she? But hopefully, she could print it out and they could have a look at it.
So Chair, you've proposed that basically, first of all, that the town clerk circulates, that you review and update it?
Yes.
And to invest, to go with the recommendation to, with reference to the 20 mile per hour zone as per the report, but to investigate the costs of that as well. And also for, as per the recommendation, Peter Burrow to draw up that list.
Yes.
Yeah, is that what you, that's your proposal?
Well, my proposal wasn't to cost it because I don't think we can cost it with our KCC's input.
Oh, the 20 mile an hour zone, when you said about...
KCC wants to do it.
Yes, but if we want just updating our plan, we put it in and we worry about the costs.
So you're going with the recommendations as per the report and I'll take out the costing. Is that your recommendation? Your recommendation is for it to circulate the HIP for review?
Yes.
The 20, as per the report, the 20 mile an hour zone and Peter Burrow to draw up the list?
Yes.
And I'll remove the costing.
Yes, we have suggested costing it because we can't.
Okay, we're not capable of doing that. Right, are you seconding that?
I'm just...
Yeah.
But I wanted to make another point.
Oh, you made the other point before.
It's just that when I was looking for funding for the Nethercourt scheme, I asked Constantine and Shonk if they would contribute on their funds they get. Didn't hear anything from Shonk at all. Maybe it's just me, but...
No, no.
Constantine, what's that? Couple of thousand, I think.
Isn't she, Karen, offered to help us in Montefiore?
Yes, because she had money set aside for sand mats, I think she called them, but it never came off.
She asked me to chase it with the town clerk, which I'd done, the town clerk is waiting for a report from Four Short at TDC.
But she was going to give us that. Because she said it didn't...
She said, she said to me, would I chase it and see whether it was viable? So I think it's still in the bones.
So she said we could have that money because it just fell through, nobody went further with it. So we were very pleased with that and we'll hold it to it, won't we?
Yes, you will. Okay, can we have a vote?
They don't get that much anymore.
No, can we have a vote on that, please, all those in favour of that motion, which hopefully you can remember? I suppose, if that's the point.
I don't think you're not going to get anywhere unless you get KCC.
But we, yes, we will, but we can try.
Can I just remind members on, before we leave that point, that the Nethercourt KCC consultation is still live until Monday, closes on Monday. We did circulate the link, I can maybe send it to the town clerk to circulate again. It's really quick to do, it's literally, I think it's the good idea to the box kind of thing. But the more of us that do it, the better.
Good idea.
Yeah, okay.
Good idea. Right, we're on to planning applications.
Before you go on, Chair, because I'm on my own, I'm going to move over there to get the plans on the screen. You have got the plans within your pack as well. Um, and if you. I may have to ask you to, um, slow down in recommendations, because sometimes it multi-class, we'll see how we go.
Um, I'll just.
Do you want to read out even this, actually, which is actually quite relevant?
It's all this south of Valhalla.
Yeah. It's ambitious, ambitious.
I do know that the deputy, the vice chair of K C C. Is a Hertfordshire councillor.
Oh, that's right.
And he's trying to do something very similar to that in Hertford.
We seriously need to get our county councillors. Um, the first application is for. Windows in Jafar Graham's Royal Road, and this has been called in by the Green Party councillors, Austin and.
Well, it's been called in by the local councillors who happen to be green, but we haven't called it in because we're green. This came to us before, uh, and they wanted you P V C windows. Uh, and now it's the, it's a big building, it's right next, it's on a, you know, a cr, a road of particular heritage. Uh, I think it's, uh, it's a landlord, it's not a single building, it's a, it's a number of, and I've had. Uh, as a side issue, huge issues with their rubbish outside. Uh, the landlord, so we had U P V C and we sent it back, and quite rightly councillor Green said. That we we should refuse this and ask T D C to review their policy on heritage buildings, which I think hasn't been reviewed for. You, I think you looked at it, it hasn't been reviewed for decades. So although I, we sat here and said we do need to come to a new position with heritage buildings and the use of double glazing.
Climate change.
Uh, and and all sorts of things to do with, uh, you know, reducing your any, energy bills and making your house more energy efficient. Particularly in in the situation everybody's in. We didn't feel we should approve this because we would have been opening the floodgates to any old Tom, Dick or Mary. Uh, putting applications in to change anything, so I think my, my, from my point of view, we should be again. Writing to T D, to the T D C and telling them that, that they should not be approving anything in any heritage buildings. Until they've reviewed their heritage statement policy on on that topic.
Councillor Austin.
Uh, just as an aside, I have recently asked the advice of the climate change officer. On a a planning matter that came to us as Ward councillors, not this one. And she referred me to the, uh, conservation area, area document and all the stuff from Historic England in there. And so we're in correspondence at the moment, I'm saying, well, this is really helpful, but I'm not sure that it's been adopted by T D C as policy. So it's kind of in limbo.
Oh, I'd love to.
Could I, could I ask, why has this come back?
Because was your P V C bomb.
Have they just put the same?
Aluminium, aluminium. But could I just say that the policy of no P V C. Does not mean that you have to have wood, right?
I'm not saying that.
No, no, I know you're not, but we've had this discussion before, some buildings will suit having aluminium windows.
Yes, we looked at one in.
Yes, yes, and people were saying that they should have wood windows, and that's not necessarily.
Saying that, because I'm, I'm a believer in, we should, you know, when you go, when I, when I did go abroad. Uh, in the rest of Europe, there are some stunning buildings, and when you look closely, their sash windows are not wood at all. And what I think we don't have an up-to-date policy, and actually, the climate emergency meeting was really useful. Because we had Michael Foley there, who is a heritage architect, who's, who directed us to all sorts of links. That that Heritage England have got that would help builders like this, this, and T D C update its own policy. So that, so that everybody would be better informed about about the ways we should be moving forward.
Okay.
Problem is, that policy is out of date.
But are we objecting to the use of aluminium windows? Are we going to demand that they use wood, wood windows?
No, I think what, we can, councillor Green, if you can remember what you said last time, you'd say it again.
Just, we just done this. My understanding is that if it's a single building. Then you can change the window.
It's a right.
Even in a conservation area, you can't have it tested, obviously. But it's just in a conservation area, in a single building, i.e. not part of a.
Not part of a.
A terrace and whatever, you can change it. But, but, but the point is, it should all be in the conservation area document. And that's, that's what we've got to ask T D C to enforce whatever, whatever's there until they change it.
Well, so could I propose that we ask T D C to clarify?
Yes.
Um, their position.
Their policy, yes.
Their policies, please.
Can they clarify and update their policy?
Well, clarify and.
Clarify.
To start, right, and in the meantime. Um, I mean, I think aluminium windows are really suitable in industrial.
Industrial buildings.
X, 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 industrial buildings, but I can't see what this is, is it a new build?
We've got a picture of it. It's, it's the bottom, the bottom picture, it's the one behind the.
But you can't really tell.
Is the picture of, uh, existing on the, the two pictures of the houses are drawn.
Yeah.
On the, uh, left is the existing, and that's supposed, they are, they look identical.
But what's the picture on the left, the photograph?
The building.
It's, it's, you've got it in the pack, have you got it in the pack?
Yes, yes.
It's in there, it's a small building behind Rafalga Hotel.
Is it new?
Says, I don't understand why, given that.
No. Because I actually, I haven't found out, I went to look at it yesterday and I couldn't find it.
It's an old building, but it's turned behind.
Just up a little street next to it, means.
I'm surprised T D C turned it down.
Yeah.
So what was.
Can we just say, what we said before, that we'd like.
Clarification.
To clarify their policy and update it.
Yes.
We don't have to make any comment on.
Community would like to speak, actually. They are going to be double glazed, which is good in terms of, um, energy retention.
Yep.
Whereas I've seen the original ones weren't.
Yes, about three or four months ago, there was a review for the conservation areas in Ramsgate that T D C did do, next term of funding.
It's a long document, lots of pictures, it's about two hundred pages long, but I think it said the problem is the cost. In an ideal situation, quotes on quotes, you would have sash windows that were wood.
Wood sash windows.
Conservation.
Glazed, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't really work very well.
It's a cost issue.
Hmm?
It's a cost issue.
There's a cost issue, and, yeah, they're very heavy, and so you've got to change all the weights and all that sort of stuff.
It doesn't even say they're doing sash windows.
Yeah.
Um.
Sorry, you're, you're dealing with this application? Last time, uh, your, um, objection was Ramsgate Town Council objects to U P V C in the conservation area until T D C has updated its policy. Are you saying you want to to repeat that, but put aluminium in, or any U P V C and aluminium? How do you want to work it?
Personally, I don't want to object to the aluminium windows, but we need to probably take a vote on that. Yeah.
I don't, I don't necessarily object to aluminium, but I think there should be sash.
You have a proposal at the moment just to say, ask T D C to clarify and update their policy. Um, so.
Are we able to do that, Deputy Town Clerk, just, just do that without actually?
You can do that, but you're not addressing, you're not addressing the application, yeah. But I, I think.
I would say no comment.
No comment. I don't think you can say no comment, I think we should say we're unable to comment because we can't.
They won't take any notice of us saying unable.
They do, they do actually read the R T C, I can, I'm unplanning, so they do actually read them out.
Already asked them in the previous one about their policy.
Well, may, what will have happened is the guy would have withdrawn the application and put in a new application.
Yeah.
So what I think we need to do is, we need to say, we, we need to say exactly the same thing and see what happens. So change U P V C to aluminium or put aluminium and U P V C? We remain confused.
No. I don't think we should cut out aluminium, it may not be appropriate in this area.
The problem is, we don't know which, what kind of aluminium.
We do, because they, they gave details of it in their planning application.
They've got a little picture of them.
Yes. It's like for light, almost.
It's like for light, yeah. Yeah.
It's like for light, yeah.
Are they sash?
I don't think there's sash to start with, no.
Well, they've got a bar across the middle, there should be sash.
Can we try? Ramsgate Town Council has no objection to this application, but would urge T D C as a, to, to clarify its policy on.
Urge again?
Yes, again, urge.
Urgent, yes.
T D C to clarify its policy on. So that.
Because of the danger of creating a precedent.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So, um, I will second that.
You've already, you have already got a proposal on there, so you accept the change to that and.
I'll accept and change to that, and you will second it. Can we vote on it then, please?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's like having a game of football, not being clear about the rules, that's the issue.
Well, I wouldn't be clear about the rules, surprise me. Um, forty-four Vale Square, erection of a single story, near extension. It should be.
Again, your, the plans are within your package, if you can fix that. Why was this called?
I'm called in stuff that's in the conservation area. Um, for us to have a look at, it doesn't mean I have any objection to it, it just means I think we should have a look. Hmm.
Um, because I can advise you that the materials that are going to be used match the existing. So you're aware of that.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
I think generally, if it's not ever looking, then we have not done it at the rear, aren't we?
They've, they've done a huge amount of work on this building. Uh, there are builders going in and out all the time, and as far as I can tell, it's not going to cause any sort. But I did think we should, I should, uh, bring it to the council for consideration.
Substantial, um, addition to the house next door, and this sort of matches it.
I think so, yes, because we've got another one in our, our ward outside the conservation area, it's exactly the same, it, it's.
Do you mean?
Match what's next door.
Yeah.
I propose no comments.
Yep.
Yes.
No comment, agreed, yeah.
Vote, no comment, right. Okay, the next, number three, is the same one.
Yeah, and this is the consent, so no comment.
This book, so that's the same thing, no comment. Um, and ten Liverpool lawn, cal, cal, called in by councillor Austin. Um. Recovering a roof, removal of render, installation of two. Timber sash windows to rear elevation, we said no comment before. Um.
Say no comment again, is it just?
Say no comment again, I would have thought.
Yeah.
Um.
I don't know, so, replacement on here.
It's, uh, no, the. Installation of two timber sash windows.
Yeah, three timber sash windows.
Because the only thing is.
The previous one.
This is number four.
This is for replacement of three, first one.
Oh, okay. Um, to the extension.
Do you want me to advise members? Yeah, members, uh, the materials to be used are the, um, existing materials and finishes of timber and proposed materials and finishes of timber.
Right, um, and it just says they're recovering the roof. And they're removing render. Are they replacing the render and what are they recovering the roof with, does it say anywhere? Because where was I the other day, they recovered the roof with clay tiles and the roof began to sink. Yeah.
Is that part of this application?
No. No, but it doesn't, doesn't say what they're recovering the roof for. Jane, can you see the roofs?
Comment on it, it's not part of this application, is it?
It is.
Is it?
It says, recovering of roof, removal of render and installation. Oh, that's the previous one, okay.
Yeah. So there's no comment.
Okay, no.
No comment.
Everybody happy with no comment?
Yeah, yes.
Um, three Adelaide Gardens. Um, they want a one point one front boundary wall in Britain. Following demolition of existing.
It's a small wall that's looking very tatty and like it does need rebuilding. But it's part of a set of walls along the road which are brick and, they have been brick and flint. But the flint has been lost, some of them. Um, and this was turned down once, and I just wanted us to have a closer look to make sure we're happy with the new proposal.
Well, it seems to be quite a high wall compared to what's shown on that. One point one metres.
One point one metres is about that.
Yeah.
It's only a hundred, isn't it?
Certainly the height of it.
Higher, higher than that, I think.
I went and had a look at it, and I think it's about the same.
Oh, you think it's the same?
I think it's about the same, it is.
Right.
Just want to look at the materials really, because the mater, they want to put wood facing on it or something, don't they?
Wood facing on a brick wall?
Yes, that's the card. Brick and timber, aren't they?
Brick and timber wall.
Brick and timber.
Yes, councillor Green.
This is, this is the same height as the previous one.
Right.
Yes.
That's T D C turned down.
What?
Because they said it would unbalance the power.
Yes, it's.
Right.
So presumably it's still a lovely.
Yeah, so we need to say it's not suitable.
For the reason that T D C.
It has unbalanced properties.
If that's what.
I think they've changed it from the previous.
I can't see that, still the same.
Well.
Still going to get it.
But maybe it's just the bottom of the kitchen. I don't know, is it left with the timber on top?
It's on there.
That one. Oxford Square. Obviously, I can't put that one. Um.
This is what it looks like currently?
Yeah.
This is how it would have, if it's.
Well, it doesn't look unbalanced with the neighbour.
No, it doesn't. Because it's totally matched to the next one, basically.
Yeah. Well, I propose we say no.
Say no comment then, if we're not sure.
Is that seconded to?
Seconded.
Yeah, yeah, everyone in favour? Adelaide Gardens. And that's it. And our application. And the date and time of the next meeting is Wednesday, the third of August, we're supposed to have plans, aren't we?